I'll second.
What?
May in the second, and anything further? All in favor? It's unanimous. And there are no minutes to approve this evening, so we'll move directly to our seven o'clock appointment, which is with Joseph Martinello and Gina Martinello, chairs of the Wilmington Relay for Life regarding inaugural American Cancer Relay for Life event in Wilmington to be held May 16th, 2009, from 3:30 PM to May 17th, 2009, 9:30 AM. And that's at the Wilmington High School Frank Kelly Track. Good evening.
Good evening. A pleasure to be here. Thank you for inviting us. Excited to share information about this event with all of you and with the community. We've reached out to the community already in a couple of fashions through the school system, as well as through the local papers. But today, I'm here to just describe what Relay for Life is, how we came about bringing it to Wilmington, and what you can expect the day of the event.
Great.
So Relay for Life is an event that the American Cancer Society started well over 20 years ago, and it's a fundraising activity, as well as education activity for the community to make the communities throughout the states aware of cancer and the impact of cancer on everyone's everyday life. And Relay for Life has been an amazing event. I had the privilege of attending an event last year in Burlington, and that's what brought myself to reach out to the American Cancer Society to find out how we could bring this event to Wilmington. The day of the event, you'll see three different types of ceremonies. It starts off with a survivor ceremony, and in that survivor ceremony, you'll honor the survivors that have been battling cancer. So it could be somebody currently battling cancer, or somebody that's overcome cancer. So we'll have a ceremony to start off, and then as the sun sets, we'll have an additional ceremony, a luminaria ceremony. And in the luminaria ceremony, we'll honor those who have passed from cancer. And the following day, we'll have an additional ceremony, and it's considered the Fight Back Ceremony, and that ceremony talks about what the American Cancer Society is doing to fight cancer, and what we accomplished as a community up to that point to raise money to help fight against cancer. The history of bringing Relay for Life to Wilmington is interesting. I attended an event in Burlington last year. I'm also an assistant coach on the Wilmington track team, and one of my athletes invited me to sponsor him. And opposed to just donating money, I attended the event with him and helped raise money. And at the event itself, I remember during the luminaria ceremony, I'm walking around the track with my wife, and it was just, it's a very moving event, and we were just chit-chatting about how our family needs to be involved next year. And then we started talking about the greater community of Wilmington, and how cancer's impacted Wilmington, and the members of Wilmington that I'm aware of, or the community members that I'm aware of. And I started talking to other members of the community, and it's bring it to Wilmington. So back in July, I reached out to the American Cancer Society, and we pulled together a committee of roughly 30 to 40 people that have been working on it since the July-August timeframe. And we got approval of the school committee to host it at the high school, and got buy-in from the general community. And right now, today, we're looking, it's looking amazing. We've already raised close to $24,000, and that alone is just a very powerful statement. We're still 54 days out from the event, and the original goal the American Cancer Society gave us was $30,000. Right now, we're projected to raise anywhere between 60 and 70. My personal goal is 100, so, you know, the more, the better. We've already have 312 people registered for the event, and the American Cancer Society hoped for us to have 300 registered. So we're looking to have well over 400 people participating in this event. And then we have 41 teams, and they were hoping for us to have 24. So it's very telling of the impact of cancer in Wilmington, and the difference that the community wants to make to fight against this disease, and how the community wants to come together, you know, jointly and discuss the disease, talk about people's experiences, as well as how people are coping with it. So I'm here today to, you know, educate all of you, as well as the remaining people in the community of Wilmington who haven't heard about the event, and where you can find more information, how you can get involved, and answer any questions that any of you have. So we have a website. It's www.wilmingtonrfl.com. And there are several ways of getting involved with this event. You can create your own team. You can join an existing team that's already out there. You can sponsor, so for any business residents in town, they could sponsor the event. In addition to that, you could just attend the day of the event. If you don't want to participate in the relay portion of the event, and I'll explain that in a second, I passed over that earlier, but you could attend the day of the event. We're going to have festivities throughout the morning and throughout the evening of that event. So we'll kick off, and actually Gina, I'll pass this over to Gina at this point, because Gina's actually working a lot. She's on the Event and Activities Committee, and she can give you a little insight to what you could expect the day of the event.
So the day of the event really is focused on the entire community. So we're looking for families to really come out, and Joe was mentioning before that you're looking to gather teams together, and the premises of the event is that it's an overnight event. So it starts in the afternoon of Saturday, the 16th, May 16th, and starts about, registration's going to start about 1:30. The actual event will start about 4:00, and we're looking for people to come and camp out overnight. And basically, it is that cancer never sleeps, and that's the theme of the event. And each team is supposed to have one representative on the track at all times, starting from 4:00 PM until 9:00 AM the next morning. So during that timeframe, there's going to be a gamut of activities going on for families, all age levels, you know, from bouncy houses to karaoke for adults. There'll be fundraising activities on-site. One of the well-received activities is karaoke, having people get up and basically sing onstage. And one of the fundraising events will be, you can pay to have someone stop singing. So there's going to be a whole gamut of activities for families, because we're really looking to have families come. Whether or not you're deciding to stay overnight, it's really going to be, because Wilmington is such a family-oriented town, and we have so many activities with parades and the Fourth of July festivities and so forth, it is really being well-received by the community. So we're looking forward to, you know, some really fun things for kids, adults, and so forth. We have a lot of high school students that are very actively involved, not only in the committee, but have signed up on teams. So we're looking for, you know, majority of the community to become involved, whether it's just to stopping during the day, or to actually, you know, attend the event overnight and raise some sponsorship dollars, so. Any questions that anyone has, or has anyone heard of the event before?
Anything down there?
Just a comment. We appreciate everything you do. Unfortunately, cancer's probably touched many of us in this room. I know myself personally, and even some of these individuals up here, I'm sure in the audience, so we take our hat off to you. We really appreciate everything you're doing, and, you know, look forward to the activities. And I'm sure you're going to hopefully meet your goal, and I think that's just wonderful, what you're doing, and just through the chairman, I just wanted to make at least those comments. Thank you.
I agree with what Mike just said. My mother-in-law passed away of breast cancer a few years back, and I'm going to challenge my family to get a team together and get out there and spend the day, the evening out there with you, and thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
I just echo the sentiments that have already been expressed, and, you know, Wilmington, all the time I'm asked, what makes Wilmington a special town? And one of the things that I always talk about is the sense of volunteerism, and every time there's a, you know, a worthy cause, people step up and really go after it, you know, with zeal and enthusiasm. And obviously, the results you've already seen show that you've taken on this the same way. So it's a credit to the town. We appreciate your work.
Very good.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if anybody missed those, the website or whatever, I know there's been publications in the newspaper, but the next issue of Town Topics will feature an article on the Relay for Life. It'll be on the first page, which will come out at the end of this month, so if anybody is still looking for references in how to contact Joe or Gina, that will be in the mailing. That goes out to all of the property owners.
Excellent.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night. Good luck.
And with that, we'll move to communications.
Mr. Chairman, just an advisory that the town has received an additional settlement check for the net proceeds in accordance with an approval that had already been made by the Board of Selectmen and the Water and Sewer Commission with regard to the MTBE Products Liability Litigation. This is with Total Petrochemicals, and this is a smaller defendant, and we received $2,018.17. That amount is in addition to the previously reported payments of just about $845,000. As you know, Wilmington was among the 80 Massachusetts public water providers and hundreds of others nationwide who participated in this class action lawsuit, and as the board is aware, we expect some additional settlements in the very near future. We have a letter from the Massachusetts State Lottery Commission that indicates that they offer existing non-pouring agents the opportunity to be involved in a new product called Keno to Go, which is identical to existing online games such as MegaBucks and Mass Cash. The lottery does not provide agents with any Keno monitors in this case, but if you are an existing agent and qualified by the standards of the lottery, you are able to apply for a Keno to Go. In this case, Whistlestop Market of 433 B Main Street has done so. The town has an opportunity to raise an objection in writing if they wish to do that within 21 days of receipt of the letter. The letter was received on March 16th. We asked for the chief of police's recommendation, and the chief had a favorable recommendation in this case. He had no objection.
My understanding is that if the board objects, or the town objects, that we should do so in writing. If we don't object, then we need not take any action. Is there anybody on the board who has any objection that we want to address? Hearing none, then I think we can just, I don't think we need to send anything in.
No. Okay. The board has received a letter addressed to the chairman congratulating the town that it has been awarded from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection a municipal sustainability grant, which is valued at $1,171.50. It means the town will receive 50 water conservation kits and 50 rain barrel discount vouchers. This is something that is pretty much standard that we've been eligible for receipt over the last several years. We also received a letter two weeks later, addressed to the chairman, indicating that state funding cuts have impacted the ability to award municipal sustainability grants for this fiscal year, and that the few grants that were awarded were funded through federal grant monies, and that's where our award was funded. They're now telling you that there will be no additional grants funded this year, with the possible exception of limited pay as you throw assistance. So this does not affect the grant that I just mentioned, but there will be no additional recycling-related grants coming from DEP this year because of the state budget situation. The board is in receipt of correspondence that was sent to me from the Massachusetts Highway Department, just notifying us that there will be maintenance and related work on Interstate I-93. The Mass Highways Project Review Committee has determined that work on the interstate in the area of Wilmington will be eligible for federal funding, and they are now going through the development process for the project. This is a fairly routine thing. Every five or so years, work is done in various stretches of 93. As we get additional information in terms of timing, we'll let the public know. The board has received a copy of a letter, again, that was sent to me by David Kressman, the town manager in Tewksbury, at the request of the Tewksbury Board of Selectmen. He attaches to his correspondence a memorandum concerning the Sutton Brook Superfund Site and a petition that was presented to the Tewksbury Board of Selectmen concerning the possibility of advancing the timeline on the construction of the I-93 Tri-Town Interchange and Hall Road to access the Sutton Brook Superfund Site as opposed to local roads. The Board of Selectmen has asked that this information be sent to the town of Wilmington, and the indication from Mr. Kressman is that he believes if local roads are used, in terms of removing or taking in soil, that trucks will not be limited to Tewksbury Streets and may attempt to use other roads. The, the Selectmen have provided the board with their position, and they're looking to get the support of the Board of Selectmen in Tewksbury. I will note that at the recent meeting held on March 19th on the I-93 Interchange Project, officials from EPA were present, and they indicated that there would not be any hazardous material leaving the site, leaving the Sutton Brook landfill site. So that was certainly good news, and what they indicated was that there would merely be soil going into the site for the closure activities at that particular landfill. So that information just came in last Thursday, so we'll try to get some more information as time goes on.
Yeah, there's no time crunch here for us to get a better feel for how much fill material is being brought in, how much truck traffic and all that.
I don't think so, but we'll certainly stay on top of that through the Tri-Town group.
Okay.
There's also a copy of a letter that the Board of Selectmen in Tewksbury sent to the Division Administrator of the Federal Highway Administration, Lucy Galialoskus, just indicating them that they too are going to be a participating agency in the development of the EIS for the I-93 Tri-Town Interchange Project. That's something the Board of Selectmen in Wilmington had already done, and so hadn't end over. They also note again that they're pushing, in this case, that the existing local roads not to be used, which is really a standard position now that has been taken by all of the communities. And they also again address the requirement of putting a temporary hall road to connect to I-93 for any remediation at the Superfund Site that was just mentioned in the prior letter. At the time that this was written, again, they were not aware that there would not be any removal of soil from that site. The board has a letter before it from Jane Lyman of Comcast regarding service and rate changes. She's informing the board of a decrease in the prices for three of their triple-play bundle packages and the introduction of new service offerings. They are providing this information to all of their customers, but as required, they need to make that announcement through the Board of Selectmen initially, and all of their customers will be receiving all of the information from Comcast directly. Mr. Chairman, the board is being asked to consider approving the collective bargaining agreement between the town of Wilmington and the New England Police Benevolent Association, who represent, in this case, Local 101, the Public Safety Dispatches. This would be for a one-year contract for the period July 1, 2008, through June 30, 2009. It is, as was discussed with the board in executive session, it is for just this one year period. The only substantive change would be a 2.5% salary increase, that is, for the period July 1 of 2008 to June 30 of 2009. It pretty much mirrors the contract that was just signed by the teachers, and the important thing to understand is the money was already in the budget. They have been without a contract now for this entire fiscal year, at no fault of the town, as they would certainly acknowledge. They went to different representation. They used to be represented by NAGES, so all collective bargaining activity had to cease until they officially signed on to the petition with the Labor Relations Board to go with their new bargaining unit. We estimate the total cost of this to be about $10,100, which again, as I indicated, has already been included in the current budget. The actual percentage increase is less than most of the other contracts that are in effect right now that were signed three years ago. There are no contracts in effect, no contracts have been negotiated for July 1st going forward. With the adoption or ratification of this contract, if that is your position, this will mean that all municipal unions are on the same contract schedule, and all contracts will be up on June 30th. We're in the process, as you know, through our meetings, on negotiating with the various unions. So I would recommend that the board consider approval for this particular contract. Again, one year, funds have already been budgeted, and in fact, funds have been appropriated for this purpose, and the agreement is as stated.
Questions, comments, or a motion from the board?
I'll make the motion that we approve the agreement between the town of Wilmington and the NEPBA Local 101 Public Safety Dispatches for the period of July 1, 2008, to June 30, 2009.
Second. May in the second, and anything further from the board?
And I think the manager summed up the contract pretty well, and I know that the board had discussed it in executive session. Seemed to be the right kind of a contract, given the economic uncertainties and the fact that they have been working without a contract since July. I think it makes sense at this point.
And I would note that certainly there was discussion initially of a three-year contract, but given the economic circumstances and the collective direction of the board, that this makes the most sense.
If there'd be nothing further, all in favor? It's unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to be able to pass out the contracts and ask members of the board if they would sign. The union has also indicated that they would accept the agreement as just reviewed. The board is being asked to consider the renewal of a taxi cab license for Wilmington Taxi, and we have had a favorable recommendation from Chief Begonis in this particular matter.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
Motion to approve the renewal license for Wilmington Taxi.
Second. May in the second, and anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
And the board is being asked to consider the renewal of taxi cab operator's license for Timothy J. Flynn. Mr. Flynn is the owner-operator of Wilmington Taxi. And there is also a favorable recommendation from the police chief.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion now, the chairman requests.
I'll second. May in the second, and anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, the board has a letter addressed to you from Terry Marsiello, the Director of Elderly Services, asking to use the town common for a joint event with the Wilmington High School to be held on Friday, May 22nd, 2009, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. For the past three years, the Elderly Services Department has been working with high school student volunteers under the guidance of this high school nurse, Sue Rowe. They've also worked in conjunction with the Kiwanis Club for an annual end-of-the-year event just before the seniors in high school graduate. A number of them participate in volunteer activities with the Elderly Services Department. This year, they're hoping to be able to have an event on the town common and are looking for permission from the Board of Selectmen to do so.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
Is there any complaints on the common? These dates, I'm sure.
No, we checked that out.
I make a motion, and we accept this.
Second. May in the second, and anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
The board also has a request from Deborah Cipriani, the Recreation Director, to use the town common and gazebo for the Summer Concert Series on Wednesdays, July 8th, July 15th, July 22nd, and July 29th, with rain dates the following two Wednesdays in August. This is the annual request for this very, very popular series of concerts that's held at the town common in the summer.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we grant the request for the Recreation Director for the use of the common for those dates.
Second. May in the second, and anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
And the Wilmington Garden Club is requesting to hold its annual plant sale on Saturday, May 9th, from 9:00 AM to noon. They're looking to be able to use both the town common and the parking lot at the Swain School for the Garden Club's major fundraiser of the year.
Have any questions, comments, or a motion?
Motion, we grant the request?
I'll second.
May in the second, and anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the regular business before the board.
Public comments? Anything from the audience tonight? Seeing no hands in the audience? Any new business? Sit down here. Important dates.
Important to youngsters in kindergarten through the second grade, registration deadline for T-ball is March 27th. Don't get shut out. Go over to the Recreation Department, give them a call, or sign up, your youngster, for this particular activity. On April 3rd, will be the last day to register to vote for the annual town election and town meeting. The town clerk's office will be open from 8:30 AM to 8:00 PM on that day, and they'll also be accepting applications for passports for those that are interested. Obviously, if you're already registered to vote, we're just talking about any new voters here. On April 4th, the town, through its Board of Health, will hold the rabies clinic at the Public Buildings Department from 12:00 noon until 2:00 PM. There's a $10 charge for the inoculation. Cats are also included. They must be in a carrier, and dogs must be on a leash. The Public Buildings Department is located on Church Street, next to the Masonic Hall, sandwiched in between the post office, the former fire department, for those that remember. On April 11th, the annual Easter egg hunt will be held in the town common. Again, this event is sponsored by the Recreation Department, and there is information in the upcoming Town Topics about this particular event, which is being held for Wilmington youngsters ages six and under. And then, just to let you know, the annual town election is April 25th, and the town meeting is May 2nd. The town election, the polls open 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and the town meeting begins at 10:30 AM at the high school gymnasium. Did I say the 2nd? It's May 2nd? Yes. May 2nd is the annual town meeting. That concludes the important dates.
It's the board's pleasure. We intend to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing proposed MTBE settlement and review of executive session minutes and... settlement and review of executive session minutes and not to return to open session. Do we have a motion of that effect?
Second.
May the second it. All in favor? Roll call vote beginning down here?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Let you know.[1465.15]